Good evening. We'll open the board, January 4th, 2021, Board of County Commissioners meeting. And as normal, we'll open with an invocation, which I'll present. So if you'll like to join me, please bow. Dear Holy Father, 2020 was a challenging year. However, with your grace, we are stronger to face what 2021 brings to us. We ask your blessings on our tasks before us. Please give us the wisdom and the clear insight to do our best for our citizens. During this time of differences of ideology in our country, may you guide our leadership to make the decisions that allow your grace to continue be the guiding light in our land. Please give us, give this board wisdom and let us be the leadership that is an example for our county and country. Let us demonstrate the respect that all of our citizens deserve and let their personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters. Please give special protection to our law enforcement, military, fire, and EMS, and keep them safe while they protect our community. Finally, dear Lord, please grant us humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is our informal comments, and we have had no one sign up for informal comments. Next, we will have additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that we move item 18, Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant, to the, I guess it would be New Business for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion, any discussion? We'll take a vote on that motion. All in favor of making the move? Okay, all opposed? Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda. And I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Yes, sir?
I guess I'm unclear as to why we would take an item, not put an item on the agenda for discussion. And there's a clear question about it. Any purpose that I think even staff's been prepared to have, I think we have Ms. Jackman here to answer some questions about it. Does she come? Kristen, that you by there in the room? I appreciate you guys reconsidering and allowing that for discussion on the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address that. We run a very transparent board. If you, the agenda, consent agenda, is sent out in time where if you have any questions, ask the question. There is no purpose, when things are put on the consent agenda, so simple as cares money going to election workers that worked during COVID, to pull a department head in here to explain why it's happening.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
I think the concern is, is where the money is coming from. And if the money's coming from an organization outside, that's especially something maybe is controversial, is what we've been hearing on the national news lately, that maybe we should discuss it, at least before we take a vote on it. And I may be in support of using that money. I would just like to know exactly where the money's coming from.
Well, we have opportunities like this frequently. And I think we've got a motion on the floor.
I understand.
And so I'll ask all in favor of the motion to accept consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. All right. And we'll reconsider the, consider removing 18 and put it in New Business? All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. Okay. It will end up being item 25?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, we have Old Business, North Star Final Presentation to Union County, branding on the branding initiative.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Catherine Brown with us this evening. And I believe we have some folks from North Star with us online. And I will turn this over to Catherine and let her do the introductions and take it from here.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you, Commissioners. So I do, we have Ed Barlow from North, oh, let me type this off.
You're six foot away.
We have Ed Barlow from North Star on the line. He's going to walk through the creative. Ed actually presented to you back in September when he presented the research material. So this next one, or this presentation is, will walk through the creative. Once we get through this, the next step will be implementation. And that will, I will emphasize, will be a marathon, not a sprint. So you'll see today, Ed's going to show you some of the ways that the brand will come to life. And I just want to emphasize that 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 isn't a flip of the switch. That's something that is a long-term implementation that we'll be putting together next after this. So Ed is going to shoot, there's a lot of material, but he is shooting for 15, 15 to 20 minutes. So Ed, all right, I'm going to turn it over to you and just make sure once you're, you are still muted. That's like the key phrase of, there we go.
All right. Well, thanks, Catherine. And Commissioners, glad to present to you again. So let me switch to this, this presentation. So we'll try to do this in that 15 minutes, but I'll look forward to any questions after we go through this. So we appreciate the opportunity to be your partner in this, in this effort. And so may just a little bit of review, we want to talk about how we uncovered the brand. We don't just decide what a brand is. We uncover it through research. And then we get to strategy, strategic positioning, and then on to creative and action. So we'll be sharing excerpts from that action plan and the creative development. You'll remember this, this slide, kind of like an exit or an hourglass. We take all that research in the top. We narrow that to what is distinct and ownable for Union County, and then have best to articulate that and bring that to life, bring that strategy to life throughout Union County. And as Catherine mentioned, as we share this, these plans with you or excerpts from it, it's typically a two to three-year sort of plan or even longer. So it won't happen all at, at once. But our goal here is to maximize resources, to present a cohesive, cohesive and consistent message as we attract interest and investment to Union County. The research, we're not going to go back through all that. You saw that back in September. A lot of research within the community of Union County, but also the external perspective, both quantitative and qualitative in both of those areas. It gets us to the neck of that hourglass, that strategic distinction that was presented also in September. So this won't be new to you, but identifying Union County as that place that celebrates an independent spirit, cultivates knowledge, and invigorates hard work, and takes opportunities to new heights. So really strong foundation on which the bottom half of that hourglass is based. And so we worked with a creative committee there in Union County that evaluated some creative tools. As you start to implement the brand moving forward, you will have full discretion on how, how you do that. But some creative development coming from the process. So you see a strong mark here, a very solid blue U, and then some negative space that forms a C. The name Union County, sort of grouped together there to play on the name Union, but also things coming together in this great, great place. And so that leaf is a nod to the agricultural heritage, but also forward-looking as a place of opportunity and that horizon line leading to, and leaning to the future. And then the tagline of Plant Your Future with a very bold future highlighted there in, in the line. Color palette for the brand, very bright and inviting and approachable, just like Union County, but reflecting the natural elements from the sunshine to the skies to the distinct sunflowers in King Creek Park. In visual directions, one of the parts of the creative process is to present a full-page ad. So we, you may not, you may not have full-page ads in publications for Union County, but it is a method of identifying some design cues that you'll see as we move through today's presentation and the team will use moving forward. And so this ad is a quality-of-life ad, so featuring a gentleman and his young child, but being able to showcase assets across the county at the top. We're using that strong strap line or tagline as the headline, and then the subhead of Give Your Family the Space to Reach Their Dreams. Body copy might include something like, with everything you need close by and welcoming communities with safety and opportunity, you can grow your best life here. But that look, that visual direction, also needs to serve economic development and investment. So still, that three-word line being a strong invitation to that development, give your business the space to thrive with a skilled workforce, low-cost, and business-friendly communities. It's the perfect place for your business to grow. So great imagery, great lines. You can see the design elements here that you'll see repeated in different works. And so part of the creative process was to identify some options, a family of logos for departments and, and key partners. And so the ones coming out of this process thus far, you can see the main logo on your left for several departments, like Human Services can use that logo as well. You may have departments that are a little more client-facing, consumer-oriented, from Parks and Rec to Public Works, to libraries and emergency services. Some choices made here, and they're all layered, not just, you know, what might look pretty, the Parks and Rec, there are 14 leaves in that logo for the 14 communities. The trunk showcases those people there. The library logo is a monogram of Union County Library, those books representing that monogram, and then the three parts of emergency services with people added to that mix for a Strong Shield logo for that part of the Union County family. So still in the bottom half of that hourglass of our process that we showed you, this will be in the final report. It's a two- to three-year implementation plan. It's meant to maximize those resources and bring all the parts of the county together so that they're speaking consistently. But you'll never do all of this at once. We have many strategies and lots of tactical ideas in this plan. We're going to summarize some of those and share some creative work with you today. But again, everything that you see today is not necessarily a new budget item. You're already doing some of these things, so it may just be rotating when it's time to replace, say, Letterhead, or you do get a new vehicle for a department, and decals go on that. So you can rotate things in that you've already, already planned for. So that organization, we want to give ideas in this plan on how to structure the brand, how to take it forward. And some of these will involve, involve some creative elements. We want you to assign a brand leader that carries us forward. If you try to do it by committee, it will fall through the cracks. But we talked a little bit about Letterhead and, and business cards here. And so this is how those tools can look in Letterhead. And we provided templates for these items to save you some time and effort. But again, you will have full discretion in how you choose to implement these. These are just recommendations given what we know about Union County, but also our expertise in doing this across the country. Email signatures so that those are consistent and folks know when they're receiving one from Union County. You'll see these PowerPoint backgrounds in this, this presentation. But we have these ready to go for you as well to save you some time instead of rebuilding those. And so the brand leader will, out of the gate, need to create a brand presentation. We're going to share the presentations that we're giving today and some, some others will reference that will save some time as well. But the brand leader will, and Catherine's team, will need to speak with all aspects, from department heads and employees to the business community, nonprofits, cultural organizations, the other communities, and talk about the brand and how it can benefit them and advance Union County as a whole. Another key area and important part of implementation will be different departments. And so the Human Services already communicates with banners like these, and this is as they use the new brand, how the banners can look. And you can see the creation on the line on the end of this exhibit cloth, Here for Your Future. You do some brochures, and so applying the brand, the language, the logo, the color palettes, keeping things clean and effective. And then perhaps apparel or uniforms for different departments, or on casual Fridays, whatever you deem appropriate is how the brand can look there. And then for different departments, some branded uniform elements here as well. You've got great vehicles across the county. We've got a couple options here for your transportation van, and how the van can be applied to that when you choose to do so. And then your trucks can carry the brand throughout the county, depending on their, their charge and, and aim. And Parks and Rec, using their vehicle and demonstrating different ways to present that brand. And your Public Works Department. Broader community, want, want folks to, not just employees of the county, but everybody that lives and or works in the, the community of Union County to experience the brand. Bring folks the way to share their pride or wear their pride, and so different T-shirts and apparel. Some of these could even be adapted for uniforms or different departments if necessary. But very clean and recognizable mark, memorable logo. Again, some merchandise here. And you can see how the variation of the line works here as well. Hydrate Your Future. Web presence is key. You want to be sure that it's clean and crisp, but easily navigable. And so you can see how the brand can be applied to this. We have some more extensive recommendations in your final report, but you also want to be sure that it is designed for mobile as well. Your business community, whether that's partnering with Monroe Union County Economic Development or the Union County Chamber, or the individual chambers, engaging the business community will be a key part of implementation as, as you move forward. So we have recommendations how to engage economic development, but also existing businesses. You may like to wear this lapel pin as well, but as the brand leader meets with the business community, having these lapel pins available and talking about the brand and how to articulate that strategic distinction and the meaning of the message of Plant Your Future. Very important. Look for ways to showcase how you plant the future in Union County. And so nothing looks like future growth than a crane. And so this is a construction fence. And so great way to message with, with the partner doing the billing, or, or who will have that, that space, but also with, with Union County. And you can see the use of the logo there, the leaf shape gives you a view into that construction zone. And using the, you see the Union County 2050. This is a way, as that effort moves forward and planning, a way to provide some tools there as, as well. Infrastructure signage is a very important part of a brand, but it's not politically or financially feasible to do all signage at once or all infrastructure items. And so even in the two- to three-year plan, you may identify a five-year plan of priorities and ways that you can apply the brand through the county, and sometimes it'll be in a supportive way. You're arising all water towers, a great way to reflect and present the brand. And then from a vehicular or close-up, you can see Plant Your Future there at the base of that in the larger picture. Wayfinding and government signage, so your existing government center, you could apply the brand to the exterior. You see the, the wayfinding around the government center in Monroe. The key part is function first, and then the color palette and brand elements. And then with partners using, we wanted to show some signage here with the library using that logo from the family of logos. And then entryway signage. And so this is a way to let people know what is a part of Union County. We will have some suggestions even in the plan that shows how you might partner with your existing communities as they may be right on the county line. There may be ways for you to provide tools that are supportive of their, their entryways. And so that will just be evaluated on that sort of five-year plan as you would like to pursue that. So it's really fast, and I think I made it most in, in the 15 minutes. So we're pleased with the decisions of that, of the creative committee. Give us lots of great work to apply to parts of Union County. So we're excited to see this to come to life. Again, not overnight, but over the next, next many years. The team there in Union County has done a fantastic job for you through, through this process. I'm happy to answer, go back to anything or answer any questions if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ed. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. I'm going to minimize you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you for listening. You know what I'm talking about. All right. We'll move on to New Business. And item 23 is consideration appointment of the ETJ member to the City of Monroe's Planning Board. By email dated November 9th, City of Monroe requested that the Board of Commissioners appoint a member to serve as the ETJ member on the city's planning board. And the application was received from Patrick Furr. Vacancy has been advertised in accordance with the board's rules and procedures. No other applications were received for this vacancy. Mr. Furr has submitted an application on City of Monroe's form as well as one of the city counties' forms. Union County GIS has confirmed that Mr. Furr resides within the ETJ area.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to appoint, not consider, Patrick Furr for the ETJ member on the Monroe City Planning Board.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Next, we have item 24. And I think, Michelle, you're going to give us a legislative update.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Going to provide a brief update tonight for the board on our legislative process. The General Assembly convened session on January 13th. So we're at the time of the year where we start thinking about what our legislative process will be and what any, any goals or any opportunities that the county has with the General Assembly. So just to remind you a little bit about our process, and for Commissioner Williams, first time that you would be going through this process, starting at the end of the calendar year before session, I asked department directors to give me any specific items that they have that they would like for us to sponsor in the legislature or to work with our delegation. I did this, this past year. We do not have any specific items, but you're going to see what we have in terms of our guiding principles, which for board members who have been here, these are our continued guiding principles that we use every year in looking at legislative activity. Additionally, we have a lobbyist, Daniel Baum, who works closely with the county management team, with the board if needed, and with our delegation members on a regular basis to assess items of interest or issues that we think are important to us and to, to our residents in Union County. And so we will continue with that. Daniel has represented us for about five years now, and he will continue to do that and does, has done some really good work. I also want to thank our delegation members. And if you see them, please thank them for the work that they do on our behalf. COVID obviously presented many challenges for the legislature, for the state, and for us. And they really have looked out for our best interests and do a good job of keeping us up to speed. We have many delegation members who are in leadership positions, and we would expect to continue to see that. And so their work for us, and on behalf of the folks of Union County, really is very important. So our guiding principles, again, these are, these are not changed. These are really the guiding principles that we've used for several years now. And primarily, the reason that we have the guiding principles are a lot of times we have to make some decisions very quickly about legislation, particularly as the end of session comes, things start moving very quickly. And so these really help Daniel when he's working with us and working with our delegation members to know what we think are important. And they really primarily revolve around flexibility. And so you can see, they're pretty simple. We support legislative efforts that protect and/or enhance local governments' revenues and/or increase local funding flexibility. And we oppose any unfunded mandates and any initiatives that fail to fully fund services shifted to the county. So we fight pretty hard to make sure that the state is not putting upon us things that they're not willing to pay for. And so we really look to avoid any unfunded mandates. Additionally, tonight on your consent agenda, you actually had a vote for your representative for the upcoming legislative conference, which will be next week. And I know that you all received emails, and I think some of you probably reviewed the items that the State Association is going to be considering next week. There are 41 items currently in their proposed legislative package. Many of those are things that are of interest to us, of things that we would support. Just a couple of examples. One is around expansion of digital infrastructure and broadband capability in unserved or underserved areas. And I know that that's important to the board. It's important to us. We will be working, putting our resources, putting Daniel, you know, to work with the State Association to try to push that in, in ways that we think would be positive for us. Additionally, there's an item around support and increased state funding for existing and new transportation construction projects. Again, I think something that's important to the folks of Union County. So we will continue to really push those. But after the package is completely adopted, after the legislative conference next week, we will revisit that and see where there are areas that we think we can work in strong partnership with the State Association. And we will, we will strive to do that, and we will keep you up to date And we will keep you up to date on what those items are. Again, just a brief update. Session convenes next week. We would expect this session, this is a long session, so we would expect it to go long, six months probably. So, there'll be a lot of activity. We are, typically, we would schedule an in-person meeting, but due to COVID and, and working with our delegation members, we are going to work on scheduling virtual meetings that work with their schedules and, and Board members. So, we will be in touch with you about that. And then we will provide regular updates to the Board on any legislative activity. Daniel provides us with weekly updates. And when there are things that are of consequence or important topics, we'll make sure that you get that information and have the opportunity to weigh in. And if there are items that the Board members, that Board members are interested in, if you can let me know either tonight or in the next week or so, we can begin to work on those and get you any information that you might need regarding legislative activity. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Michelle? And if you go on and look at the site and all the particular issues, and many, many do apply to our.
Absolutely.
And we have, in the past, been the beneficiary of driving an agenda item that was accepted by the state. And so, it's a very productive process.
It is, and we work closely with those folks, and we'll continue to do that. So, we look forward to seeing what that package looks like. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate it. Okay, our next one will be item 18, Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant. Mr. Manager, would you like to address that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Elections, Union County Board of Elections, was the sub-recipient of a grant from the Center for Technology and Civic Life in the amount of $46,924. Upon receiving that award, that money has to come into our accounting system. A budget amendment has to be done so that it then can be allocated out and used for the purpose intended. That's the real purpose of this agenda item, is to receive that grant and approve the budget amendment, which places it into a line item so that it may then be used by the Board of Elections. We do have a Board of Elections Director, Kristin Jackman, with, with us this evening. And I believe we also have another one of her employees here that's familiar with this topic. So, any questions that the Board may have, I'm sure that these ladies would be more than glad to answer.
Now, this is not an uncommon process for the county, right?
No, any, any grants that the county receives like this, you know, when we, when we get the monies, they have to be accepted by the county and placed into the budget, that has to be accounted for in the budget, and placed in a line item. So, this is the same process that we go through for any monies that we would receive.
So, you'd say there's complete transparency there?
In terms of the process of receiving the money and putting it in the budget. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Questions?
Yes, I do have some questions for you, Kristin, if you wouldn't mind, wouldn't mind coming up. Thank you. And first, let me just say that my reason for asking that this be moved from the consent agenda is not to vote against it. As a matter of fact, I think I'll probably vote for it. It's more to bring attention to the source of these funds. And because I think it's something our broader community needs to know about. The Center for Tech and Civic Life is a not, is a not-for-profit entity, as I understand. Is, is that your understanding?
Yes, sir.
Also, Kristin?
Yes.
Are you familiar with Mark Zuckerberg and his $250 million donation to the center back in September? Have you heard about that?
Vaguely.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it hasn't gotten a whole lot of mainstream press coverage. But I think it's important to understand when we see these stories in the media, to know that oftentimes, there's a local connection. And sometimes that local activity, that local connection is modest. And I think in this case, it, it looks like it is. I mean, this money amounts to, let's see, just under $47,000 for basically bonus pay for, for workers. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And can you give us some understanding of what these workers did, the ones that are entitled to this bonus money?
Yes, sir. The Board of Elections this year was.
Can you speak closer to the microphone, please, ma'am? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Was challenged with the presidential election, which was the largest in this county, and to keep our staff and community safe because of COVID. Our county departments and management team were there for us to help us along with the Commissioners and our local Board of Elections. And the community did step up. Most of the elections officials from the past are elderly or retired and were in the most vulnerable for the virus and were not willing to work for this election. So, the state and really every state throughout the nation tried to make it safe for everyone and to be sure we were adequately staffed. We did receive a total of, this would make four grants, that were used for incentive pay for those workers that stepped up for the election and for PPE. The State Board of Elections received federal funds, the CARES funds, private grants, and in-kind contributions, just like all of our sanitizer, hand sanitizer that was provided for the elections was provided by Anheuser-Busch in-kind. And most of these funds went to the State Board of Elections, and they divvied those out to the county based on population and number of workers. We did receive CARES funds and, like the Plexiglas shields. We were able to offer transportation to some of the counties, I mean, to some of the sites. Additional janitorial services and cleaning of the sites to be sure they were sanitized. We use CARES funds for those purposes and for incentive pay for these workers. Just like Election Day and early voting, we were open more hours this year. We were open 17 consecutive days, including Saturdays and Sundays. They were face-to-face with over 90,000 voters that came in for early voting. So, those people from our community, we appreciate their stepping up because they really were at risk by serving the community and serving to be sure this election was successful and safe for everyone. We received prior approximately 360,000 in funds, in funding. And the Commissioners do fund elections. The county is responsible for that. But with the additional challenges this year, we received about 360,000 funds along with those in-kind contributions. This particular grant that we're looking at today is for those who worked at the early voting sites, okay? CARES Act before, we received a grant and then a supplemental grant from CARES funds that was specifically for Election Day workers. And so, Election Day workers, the MATS team, anyone that worked in elections received that hazard pay bonus so far. We were told by the state that there would be an additional grant issued to counties for those who worked at early voting sites. So, this is the last of the grants. This money was given to the State Board of Elections, and each county was asked to turn in, submit how many one-stop workers, which is early voting, how many workers we had during this election period, and how many days each one worked. So, that is the amount that we sent in along with the other counties in the state. And once the State Board had that amount, they divided that number into that pot of money that they had designated for early voting workers. So, Union County, we had approximately 188 that worked at the one-stop sites. And these are just citizens in the county. They have to be a resident and a registered voter in the county. Those workers, since we had such a long day, we divided into shifts. So, they would come in like at 7:30, work till lunchtime, the second shift come in and work until closing. We had supervisors, two supervisors at each of our eight sites. We were sure to have a Democrat and a Republican as a supervisor for each site. The supervisors were paid $14 an hour, and the rest of the staff were paid $12 an hour. And again, we tried to have a balance of party at those, at those sites. And we feel, you know, with 91,000 voting early, that they did a great job. Most of our workers this year were new. A lot of our, a lot of the staff didn't come back. There's always a great turnover, but this year, there were many, because of medical reasons or age, were not willing to be exposed. So, this last amount of grant, which is 46,000, is what was divided up to Union County for those people that only worked at early voting sites. It's not for our staff or anything.
And they were only there to assist early voting voters. They weren't engaged in what was, what's been alleged in other states, which is election administration. There was none of that. It was strictly?
No, sir. They were there for the check-in. You know, they checked in the voter. Some did cleaning of the equipment and the voting booths and just processed those voters that came to vote early. And again, there was 188 that we turned in that were eligible for this amount. And we can give you a list of those if you need that. But again, they're just residents in the community, from the community.
Kristin, I, I can tell you, those 17 days, I was at the polls all for, all but about eight hours. Your staff did a marvelous job, and they were very diligent and worked, worked through some very challenging times. So, I, one, I want to thank you. The other thing is, I heard you say that this money actually came through the state.
It did. Yes, sir.
So, it's not an outside organization directly to Union County. It's, it's through the state. Is that correct?
That's correct. The state told us they received a private grant for, for this particular purpose. And I'm not certain, sorry, if, if that was given to them or if the state decided how they were using the funds. The other CARES funds that we received, they did go through and divide it and list it for certain, you know, certain purposes within our office. And we have to file monthly reports to the state for any of these funds that we received to show how they were spent. We even have to give a list of these workers and the amounts that they received.
And the last thing I'll say on this is, again, I think you and your staff, everyone concurs, did a marvelous job in a especially demanding election cycle. And I don't think anything, there's anything here that was done improperly or even smells or, or looks improper. My real point is that this private grant that the state received and was distributed to the counties, and anybody can look this up, is from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. And Mark Zuckerberg and his wife gave $250 million on September 1st to this entity. And if you look at 990 filings, tax filings, which not-for-profits have to file, you never see in any prior year anything close to these kinds of expenditures or receipts. I think at most, you see $1.2 million from this entity. And all of a sudden, it gets a quarter of a billion dollars to use in states like North Carolina, Wisconsin, Georgia, Pennsylvania, Arizona. And I think in this case, you know, it looks like the use was pretty, pretty modest and very helpful, but, you know, not nefarious. But you look at instances outside of North Carolina, like in Fulton County, Georgia, on September 2nd, the day after this $250 million was received by this not-for-profit entity, the Fulton County Board of Elections unanimously authorizes the expenditure of these funds for elections processing and voting equipment. You know, that certainly raises some red flags to my mind. So, again, I'm going to vote for this, and I think, I can't speak more highly of you and your staff in this cycle. But I just wanted to talk about this for a bit because I think it behooves us to be wary when we see this kind of money from private entities coming into something as essential to the operation of our democracy as, you know, our election system. And I just appreciate the Board accommodating me and ultimately moving this off the consent agenda. So, thanks to, thanks to my fellow Board members.
Commissioner Ray?
All right. This was a perfect lesson in hypocrisy. And I wish I had two faces where I could look at two Commissioners because this is two-faced. You advertised on Zuckerberg's platform and told and attacked three sitting Commissioners. And then you turn around, you, you funded money to Facebook, and then you don't want the money back. I have tried to extend the hand of friendship to you. This dais is not a pulpit for you to get up here and sound like you know more about county government than all the staff and the other Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Rush?
Thank you. This money, did, did our, did our workers know that they were going to be getting this bonus? Or is this just something we decided? When did we decide to do the bonus?
No, sir. We did not know for certain. The state told us that there may be a bonus for the early voting workers, but we did not know that when they were hired or trained. Or probably halfway through early voting, we heard that it was most likely to be approved. But we didn't even know the amount until after the election. Once the election was over, we had to submit the, every county had to submit the final, final number of workers and days.
So, this wasn't a recruiting tool that you went out and said, hey, listen, if you, if you do this, you're going, you, you could get a bonus at the end of it or anything like that?
No, sir.
The, the other thing, could the, could the National Rifle Association, could they give Union County Board of Elections money and say, we're going, we want you to hire more people to work or to be working at the polls in order to get these Union County voters who are traditionally pro-gun to work?
Our, our Board could not approve that. The State Board of Elections would have to have that authority. That's not something our local office could decide.
Or could the Right to Life, National Right to Life, could they, could they say, North Carolina's been really good to us. We're going to give, you know, we're going to give them bonus money for their elections workers if they can get them working?
That would have to go through the State Board of Elections. And I know the State Board did have to apply for those grants. I know the states that received them had to go through an application process. They weren't automatically issued those funds.
Right. And something new, and I, you know, when, when I talked to Commissioner Williams earlier today, this, first I found out about it. What, didn't really know who this group was until I researched them a little bit. The major funders are Google, Facebook, Rock the Vote, organizations like that, who typically have a, have a leaning. And in this election, have shown that they completely have a leaning. I just see, see so many Union County citizens who have had Facebook put fact-checkers on political opinions that they had and trying to say that those people's opinions were wrong with little or no evidence. And sometimes completely to the contrary of being wrong, it was, it was a fact. And, and I just, you know, I, I didn't, I don't have any problem with the, with money going as extra to the, to the employees. But it wasn't part of their compensation. And I don't know that outside organizations should be given bonuses for a job well done. And even in Union County, where you did a good job. I think, I think if I went down there right now, there'd be very little fraud that we could find. There'd be very little problems that we could find. You guys run a tight ship. I'm not sure that that's the case in every county. As a matter of fact, we know it's not. And even in the State Board of Elections, which I've watched and seen lie to the North Carolina people about what's going on, I don't trust them either. So, I was going to vote for this until Commissioner Ray, Vice Chairman Ray, has, has so much trouble with it. So, I'm going to vote against it because I think this sets a precedence for the future that outside organizations can either hire people. And, and here in, in North Carolina, it might just be bonuses. But in other states, like in Pennsylvania, they were putting drop-off boxes for ballots and where people could just throw the ballot in the drop box and take off, and nobody knew any, there was no election controls on that. And we see an election in turmoil because of an organization like this doing things that, that just a year and a half ago, we, we lost representation in, in Union County for a whole year because of something that don't even touch what this organization was doing. We, we did, it ain't even a speck on the sun compared to what this organization has done and been accused of doing. So, so I'm going to vote against it. And, and I'm just, I think we need to be very careful. And if, and if we're going to open it up in the future where organizations like Right to Life or National Rifle Association, could be any other organization can come in and offer a bonus to election workers if things go their way, then I think we're setting a dangerous precedent.
I will say, it was not based on, the funds that we received weren't based on any, we weren't required to do any. we weren't required to do any type of processes or, or they were not based on the outcomes of any elections.
Yeah, I believe it's, I believe it's just money they had left over. I think it's what they had left over in the pot, and they're just thanking everybody for things going their way.
Maybe so. And, and also, we take pride in our office that our staff and our processes are nonpartisan. We try to represent everyone fairly, and we try to have bipartisan teams in all the processes that we complete in our office. So, if there's any question, any, any scrutiny, we're covered, you know, by both sides. And if anyone ever, and you know, you know, you're welcome to come and ask us questions, call, witness, review any process that we have.
And Kristin, please, please understand, this is nothing...
I understand.
...towards your office.
I understand.
But I, you know, after watching the Knight District debacle and, and seeing where, where an office in Bladen County did not have a Republican in the room, had unaffiliates and Democrats in the room when they saw the election results early, and that caused an outcry for a redo election when there was not a Republican in the room. That was in Bladen County, North Carolina. This is a North Carolina issue. This is not a Union County issue. Union County, you run a very good organization there, and you and the employees down there have been nothing but, but spectacular to work with and helpful and, and honest in every way. You've let, you've had the door open whenever I needed to see something, and I appreciate the job that you do. So, by no way is this any reflection on you. This is more reflection on the state's judgment and this organization's judgment and, and what they've done in this election.
Mr. Jackman.
Yes, Commissioner Ray.
Ms. Jackman, didn't you say the money was given to the State Board of Elections in October?
I'm not certain what time, but I believe so, yes.
Yeah. So, it wasn't a cleaning out the, the funds and sending it to the state because they got a desired effect. They gave it before the election to the State Board of Educa, I mean, of Elections.
The State Board had the funds, but we did not, were not aware of our amount until after the election.
That's what I'm saying. So, it was not a, they cleaned out their funds after the election went their way.
Then why would we have not gotten a bonus recruitment tool and said, you're going to get a bonus at the end of this? We don't know what it would be, but this organization provided a bonus money. I, I, I'm saying that it's, it doesn't smell right to me.
Okay. It doesn't smell right. Commissioner Simpson, would you like to say something?
I was just going to make a point. As I understand it, the money comes to the Union County Board of Elections, through the State Board of Elections.
Yes, sir.
Well, I want to assume that they vet that process and have a means of vetting that process. If we would, Mr. Manager or our legal team, if we were to get a $100,000 grant from a nonprofit directly to Union County, is there any process whereby that organization is vetted or that information shared with the Board of Commissioners as to whether we want to accept that money or not?
Every, every grant that comes to Union County from any source comes through this Board of County Commissioners and is approved by this Board of County Commissioners. I can think of several examples where we receive monies from outside nonprofit agencies. And I believe it was in the last meeting or the meeting before in Human Services where we received monies from the Union County Partnership for Children for several childcare subsidies and, and to subsidize several programs. So, yes, the Board of County Commissioners has an opportunity to vet out those organizations that are providing those funds and the purpose for those funds. I would point out, Mr. Simpson, if I could have another moment, that the Board of County Commissioners and the county staff really act as, as an administrative support to the Board of Elections. The Board of Elections is a fairly autonomous organization. Ms. Jackman works directly for the Board of Elections and not for the manager, but, and all of her employees work for, for her through the Board of Elections. And I'm sure the Board of Elections has looked at the money and, and taken into account if these monies have already been distributed, where the monies went, to whom they went, who, who the monies gone, have gone to. And that was the, the will and the direction of the, the Board of Elections. County, Union County Government provides more of an administrative accounting function in support of the Board of Elections.
Thank you.
With that, I'll make a motion, receive the CTCL One-Stop Worker Bonus Grant in the amount of $46,924 and to approve the Budget Amendment 27. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kristin. As usual, you did a good job. Next, we have the county managers' comments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I have a couple of things to make the board aware of. We've got some dates, and I will give you these dates in this forum at this time, but to tell you that you will be receiving additional formal communication regarding these dates, and the clerk will be helping to schedule these on your calendars. We have three meetings related to public works and the capital improvement plan, and those dates are Monday, January the 11th, February the 15th, which I believe is also a Monday, and April the 19th, which I believe is also a Monday. The 11th, I believe, will be focused on the current capital improvement plan, the projects that are in place right now, the status of those projects, the current cost of those projects, and the master plan, the current master plan direction that the board has approved in the past. All, and these, these three meetings are being scheduled really so that the information one builds on the other. Instead of drinking from a fire hose and getting all the information at one time, you'll, you'll be receiving information in stages so that when you get to the end of the process, you will be fully informed and be able to make decisions on any future capital improvement projects and any financial decisions that you are asked to make. The 15th will focus mainly on financials and rates, and the, April the 19th, we're setting that aside. You may be familiar, and we've talked about this several times, that our Public Works Department is currently undertaking an east-side sewer study. So, a, a study of sewer capacity, infrastructure, and need in the eastern part of our county, specifically around the area where we currently serve sewer. And this would include the area that would be served by the industrial part that the county is currently studying in the eastern part of the county. So, those dates, please be aware of those dates. You'll be getting some more information. In fact, the information on the 11th, you should have a cover letter along with the agenda and background information from Assistant County Manager Brian Matthews on Thursday to help you prepare for the information on Monday. To make you also aware, we are entering that time of year when we are doing a lot of budget planning and review of our financial condition and situation. And we would like to set aside on the board's calendar, the second Monday of each month from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of budget workshops and budget discussions. We are working that calendar right now. As we have done in the past two years, the calendar remains somewhat flexible in terms of topic. As we move through the year, certain topics tend to have more interest expressed in them, and we want to have an opportunity to address those as we move along. But the second Monday of each month, and Deputy County Manager Michelle Lancaster will be working that calendar and providing some additional information to the board on those dates. Lastly, and I appreciate your patience this, this evening in, in giving these comments. I sent you information yesterday morning early concerning a power outage that occurred here in the city of Monroe and affected the several government facilities, including the Union County Government Center. When the outage occurred, we also experienced a generator failure. Our generator threw a, a protective code fault and did not allow the generator to start. Fortunately, that did not impact our 911 communication systems in terms of the phone system or our radio dispatch system. It did impact our ability to use our automated addressing system and our mapping system. That power outage occurred sometime between 2:00 and 4:00 and lasted until 7:30. I will tell you that, and I just would like to note that, and you all have toured the recent renovation of the 911 center on the ground floor of this building. As part of that renovation, we beefed up the, the battery backup to those servers, and there's an eight-hour life on those batteries that allows us to continue to take calls and dispatch calls. It doesn't support the, the electricity needed to run all the servers in communications, but we had that eight-hour backup. We did discover that during this power outage and generator outage, that we have several vulnerabilities, one of those being with our servers for our general county operation. We had a, we have a battery backup, but it has a very short period of backup time associated with that, not long enough to sustain even the outage that we had this past Sunday. So, we, most of our servers were, were down. That did cause disruptions across some service, 24-hour service areas such as the jail. We, they had to go into a lockdown until the servers were, were brought back online, et cetera. Thankfully, this outage occurred on a Sunday morning, early, the least busy time of the week, if there is such a thing, for county government. And we, we have a diligent staff that came in and worked to reboot all those servers. And so, this morning, when everybody came into work, we were, we were 100% ready and everything was back up to normal. We went back to work. I did have a, a roundtable meeting with a number of directors this morning and, and folks that are, work in this area of facilities. We discussed the whys, why it happened, and how it's, how we're going to keep from this happening in the future. We already have some contingency backup plans that they are working on. They're going to provide those to Assistant County Manager Brian Matthews, and he and I will be talking about how we move forward with ensuring that we don't have another incident like this, especially during a, a busy workday or a period of time when our residents need our service the most. So, as of right now, we're all, we're back up, and we, we don't expect any further disruption to service at this time. So, with that, I thank you for, for your time and, and the opportunity to address those with you this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Rushing?
No comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Simpson?
No comments.
Mr. Williams?
On the first meeting of the new year, I'd just like to wish my fellow commissioners Happy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Ray?
Well, there's a couple of things on Consent Agenda that was good news. I'd like to congratulate Dillinger for their low bid on the EQ tank up at Poplin Pump Station. And we also awarded to Dawn Development a low bid of $892,000 for about almost three miles of water line construction. So, contrary to some reports, we are extending our water line. I'd like to thank all staff for their tedious work and dedication they have to this organization.
Thank you, sir. I'll, I'll tell you, I woke up Sunday morning to the manager's note where he notified all the commissioners of, of the outage and the situation, and I appreciate that. This board, one of the things we instituted about four years ago is we have two-on-one meetings. We can't have three commissioners together because that makes a quorum. And we have two-on-ones, and staff gives us thorough briefings on most items. Another thing that the manager does, and I'm very impressed, and the previous manager did it as well, would contact each commissioner before the meeting to explain any item that was on the agenda. I appreciate that, and that allows us to be well-informed when we're making the decisions that we have to make. But I, I'll say that this, this diocese is not a political, for a political platform. Where our business here is to run the county's business and do it in a nonpartisan fashion to ensure that all citizens are represented equally. And Kristin, yeah, again, y'all did an outstanding job. It's my pla, it's been, always been my pleasure to work with you and your staff and particularly your assistant there. She goes above and beyond to help us, and so, with that, I appreciate it. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.